Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of November 5th, 2019 is now called to order. The time is six o'clock. We made it on time. At this time, we requested all electronic devices be put in silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during special presentations portion of the meeting. The agenda can also be found in the district's website, www.lee schools.net. Navigate to the Leadership tab and choose School Board. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision to become a world-class school system. Prior to the starting of this evening's board meeting, we've been enjoying Diplomat Elementary Chorus, under the direction of Natalie Nosse Aldrich. Is that correct? Okay. Diplomat Elementary opened in 1991. The Diplomat Elementary Chorus... Okay. She wanted to sing, and she couldn't get up there with the chorus. Where's her sister or brother? Raise your hand. You're not going to. Okay, wrong question. Diplomat Elementary opened in 1991. The Diplomat Elementary Chorus has been performing and singing at on and off-campus events through many years at their annual 5K run for recess. The Edison and Ford Winter Estates, RSW International Airport, and local senior living homes, just to name a few. The chorus consists of 96 members from grades three through five, rehearsing weekly on Tuesday mornings. Oh, I thought that was another song. Thank you all so very much. You are wonderful.
Great job.
Thank you for being so good. I look forward to hearing you again. At this time, we're going to take a brief pause, so that all these beautiful children can get home, so they can go to school tomorrow. And they're going, "Oh, we're not leaving then." Thank you all so much. And parents, thank you for bringing your children. Thank you. I'd like to introduce our student representative for the evening, just as she's getting ready to drink water. Delaney Baucham is this evening's student representative from the school board's Student Advisory Committee. She is a sixth grader at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, and is excited to serve on the Student Advisory Committee, to learn about and be more engaged in the process of improving schools and school experience for students in our district. An avid reader, Delaney read over 18 million words in elementary school, completed the Mensa for Kids Excellence in Reading program, competes in the Battle of the Books competitions, is a member of the Duke TIP program, and was inducted into the National Elementary Honor Society. Delaney also won second place in the 2019 Thomas Alva Edison Regional Inventors Fair. She competes on Assembly-required first LEGO League robotics team, participates in youth government drama club, and art club. She is a seven-year member of the... Is it Napa-ua, Delaney?
Napa-ua.
Napa-ua? Napa-ua Paoanesean dancers, and a second-year competitive gymnast. And in her spare time, she goes to school. Welcome, Delaney. This evening's agenda includes the invocation... Excuse me. The Pledge of Allegiance, One Acknowledgement, the reading of One Resolution, One Recognition, Public Comment, Consent Action Items, which will include six items under Executive Services, two of which are for good cause. Dr. Atkins, will you please explain these two items?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have two items for good cause. The first is approval of the official name for high school MMM. It's important to bring this forward, because we have a groundbreaking ceremony. We'd like to have a name prior to that groundbreaking next week. And then, the second good cause item is approval of the retainer agreement with Wyss, Sirota, Hefman, Coleman, and Bierman. Cole and Bierman. And that's, of course, our board attorney. And just want to get that contract in place, so we can continue with our services.
Okay. And we have discussed those in our workshops and briefings. And as Presiding Officer, I find that there is good cause to add these two items to our agenda. We will have eight items under Academic Services, two under Business Services, two under Human Resources, and five under Operations, four items in under Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Giovinelli, and seconded by Ms. Fisher, please record your vote.
It's not coming up. Please. Yes, please.
Motion passes 7-0. And Ms. Jordan will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Fisher will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And, yes, let's go ahead and please stand.
Please bow your head. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide us always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, strengthen us as we make tough decisions. I pray that we will make and be like well-watered gardens, like a spring whose water never fails. I pray that we will be fruitful. Father, please guide us, so that this meeting can be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
At this time, please welcome Command Sergeant Major, retired Sergio L. Ortega, Army instructor of the JROTC program at Cypress Lake High, who will introduce the cadet presenting the colors this evening. Command Sergeant Major Ortega, retired after 30 years of active service, and is a veteran of Operation Iraq Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. This is his second year teaching in the Lee County School District. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. The national colors for our Pledge of Allegiance tonight are presented by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jenny Ruiz of the Panther Battalion Junior ROTC Program. Jenny Ruiz is a senior with an academic GPA of 3.83. She is actively involved in the JROTC Program Color Guard, Honor Guard, Academic, and Drill Teams. Upon graduation, Cadet Ruiz will earn her commission as a naval officer while attending Florida Southern College, pursuing a degree in healthcare. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And we are going to put our student representative to work. She is going to read for us the Character Education Word for the month, and also the resolution for National American Indian Heritage Month. Delaney?
The Character Education Word for November is Citizenship and Patriotism. The quality of an individual's response to membership in a community, and respectful devotion or allegiance to one's country. Quote, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." John F. Kennedy. The design you see displayed on the screen was created by Jason Whitney, a 10th grade student at Cypress Lake High School. Whereas 101st United States Congress passed Public Law 101 343 in 1990, which designated the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas President George H.W. Bush authorized an annual proclamation designating the 30-day period as National American Indian Heritage Month, thereafter commonly referred to as Native American Heritage Month, and whereas we recognize Native Americans as the original inhabitants of the lands that now constitute the United States of America, and whereas the rich cultural values, traditions, and achievements of the Native American community have developed and helped in molding the American society, and whereas the diverse backgrounds Native Americans and their dedication to their family's traditions and celebrations have become an integral part of America, and whereas a deep commitment to religious beliefs and a strong desire to live the American dream have helped shape our nation and steer the course of history, and whereas educational, ceremonial, and cultural purposes are helping a new generation work towards success and maintaining the wide diversity of their tribes while building bridges of understanding and friendship in the local areas, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of Lee County, Florida hereby proclaims the 30-day period of November 1st through November 30th as National American Indian Heritage Month."
Okay. Very well done. Thank you. We will now have a recognition of the Florida Sterling Conference First Place Storyboard Competition, presented by Ms. Vaughn.
I would like to invite Ms. Cindy McClung, Director of Continuous Improvement, and Mrs. Tammy Forky, Assistant Principal of Spring Creek Elementary, to come forward, please. I would also like to ask Ms. Jennifer Lusk, Assistant Principal of Lehigh Elementary, and I understand Ms. Lusk has some illness in the family and can't be here, but I wanted to mention her name anyway. Ms. Cheryl Dooley, Resource Teacher at Spring Creek Elementary, and Ms. Jeanette Walsh, Peer Collaborative Teacher at Hector A. Cafarada Elementary, to join us at the lectern. The Florida Sterling Council was formed in 1992 as a not-for-profit public-private partnership supported by the Office of the Governor. The Sterling Performance Excellence Criteria is used to examine organizations from a systems perspective. The criteria holds organizations to exceptionally high standards, saving them, as well as the state, millions of dollars annually. Lean Six Sigma is a disciplined, statistical-based, data-driven approach and continuous improvement methodology for eliminating waste and variation in product, process, or service. A Lean Six Sigma Green Belt is a professional who is well-versed in the core to advanced elements of Lean Six Sigma methodology, who leads improvement projects and/or serves as a team member as a part of a more complex improvement projects. The Florida Sterling 27th Annual Conference was held on May 28th through 31st, 2019, in Orlando, Florida. Lee County's team took first place in the storyboard competition. The storyboard was based upon the team's Lean Six Sigma Green Belt project, Absent-Minded, which focused on decreasing instructional staff absenteeism at one school. The board illustrated how the team used a variety of quality tools to analyze the problem and develop appropriate interventions. Boards were judged on project selection, root cause analysis, solution development, and implementation and impact. The school's implementation of interventions around training and wellness procedures resulted in a savings of over $42,000 in a span of eight months. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize and congratulate the Lean Six Sigma Green Belt team for this outstanding accomplishment.
Yes. Thank you.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes. Thank you. It was the long version. I sent a shorter one. Sorry. Thank you. Thanks.
Don't leave. You need your picture taken. Not so fast. If anyone would like to leave that was involved with the awards?
They should be locked back in.
Agenda is Public Comment. Mr. Quick, please address the agenda item of Public Comment.
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda, or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the cards submitted. If you did not submit a card, but still wish to address the board this evening, Ms. Kittens, the board chair, will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comment are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition, clapping, booing, or hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding quorum should be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern per Board Policy 1.11. The time per speaker tonight is three minutes. Madam Chair, I have 11 cards.
And let me apologize, I did not introduce our attorney for the evening. The benefit of having a legal firm, such as Wyss, Sirota, Hefman, Cole, and Bierman, is that we, from time to time, will have a new attorney assisting us. And Mr. Quick, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope to be coming more often as well.
Good. Thank you. Okay, before calling for the cards, is there anyone on my left that has not turned in a card that wishes to speak? Anyone on my right? After you speak, you know the process, okay? Thank you so much. We are ready to begin?
The first is actually a group of three that I understand will be presenting together. It's Carolina Amparo, Gia Escorcia, and Betsy Haskins.
And please just state your name clearly when you come up to speak, so that we can have it.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carolina Amparo, and today I'm going to be talking about National Art Honor Society at Lehigh Senior High School. So, National Art Honor Society, students use the visual arts to do community service activities for different departments and teachers at the school, and we also represent the school at community events and county competitions. So, some of the community events that we have done before include participation in the downtown Fort Myers Art Fest, where we send students to go and do sidewalk chalk art. We also design Christmas tree ornaments for the Christmas trees on display at the Edison Estate, and we also participate in their Art in the Garden exhibit, which will be out this spring. A thing that we've done this year as well is that we have partnered with the Davis Art Center, and we have submitted a Center, and we have submitted a panel that they used for their Halloween Wicked Walk. As for competitions, every year, we participate in the booth design contest at the Lee County Fair. We have won numerous awards, but the most recent was in 2018, where we won first place for our booth, our Lehigh Senior booth. And as for things that we do within the school, we work with different teachers and programs. We usually partner with the Lehigh Senior Marching Band, and we design props for the various performances. A couple years ago, we created four different panels with cover art from different albums of Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, because they were doing pieces from the band. This year, they're doing some pieces from Gustav Holt's The Planets, and so we designed a giant moon for them as well, and they have used that in a couple of their performances. Another new thing that we're trying this year is that we're also working with the Theater Department at Lehigh Senior, and we're helping them with set design and the construction and painting of their props, which they're going to use in their newest play, which is Into the Woods. It actually premieres Thursday next week, and we want to invite everybody here to come on over, because they've worked very long and very hard on it, and I know it's going to be wonderful. And lastly, National Art Honor Society at Lehigh Senior, we do hallway murals for the Visual Arts Department, and these murals serve to emphasize the beauty and the importance of the art that the students are learning about at the school. So, we have over 15 paintings within the Visual Arts Department hallway, and these paintings show the progression of art throughout history. We also have a very large vocab word wall, where essentially it's over 20 different art terms, and they're all in different colors and different fonts. And we are also currently working on a giant center for the arts logo, which will also be inside the hallway. Overall, National Art Honor Society is a wonderful organization. It's a nationwide organization, and we are the branch at Lehigh Senior. It's a place where students can come together, they can...
Madam Chair, the speaker's time is up.
Okay, I'm sorry, unfortunately you... Okay, thank you so much, and thank you to the other two.
Next is Rose McBride.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosemary McBride, and I just wanted to share a quote with you that I thought was particularly pertinent in these times. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "We must learn to live together as brothers or perish together as fools." Little food for thought. Thank you.
Is David Grogan?
Good evening, David Grogan. I come before you today as a certified fraud examiner and to alert the board that you are woefully ill-equipped to either detect fraud or prevent fraud in a budget that is over $1 billion. There have been times in the past when there are allegations of financial impropriety, and the school board talks about doing an audit by a certified public accountant. And yet, it's well-understood in the fraud industry that audits miss fraud 96% of the time. You may remember incidents involving Enron and MCI, involving millions of dollars of fraud. But you may have never heard of the $53 million stolen from the tiny municipality of Dixon, Illinois, by one person over the term of 20 years, and who was also audited by a very large, well-regarded CPA firm the entire time. That's $37,000 a day for 20 years in a town that only had a $10 million budget. I would like to focus your attention on a matter that deserves questions being asked, and that is the $8 million that was spent on cooking equipment by the Lee County School District between 2011 and 2017. At first, you may say, "That may be totally normal," but the $8 million is far more than was spent by much larger Florida school districts. There may be a very good explanation, and it may not be fraud at all, but it warrants further investigation with such questions as, "Why did we need so much equipment? Is all the equipment accounted for? What happened to the old equipment? Did it simply disappear, or was it sold at rock-bottom prices or a competitive auction process?" The citizens of Lee County will be very interested in what you find out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan.
Yefren Der Vahanian?
Yeah, from Der Vahanian, Lehigh Acres, Florida. Again, I love my country, but I fear my government. My comments is about Gateway, New High School. I think it's the wrong area with 82 and Daniels. I think it's a big problem with traffic and everything. I was by there the other day, I don't live in Gateway, but I drove, I drive through there a lot, and where the school is going, you know, I saw the plans, I thought they'd be a nice area, they cut out these trees and everything. This area was full of pine trees, it was full of all kinds of trees, animals, birds, and everything, and you people, and us people, let that construction crew come in and wipe out every damn tree, every tree. It's unconscionable that this should happen. It's terrible. You couldn't leave an area of trees in there? Where'd the birds go? Where'd these animals go? Terrible, terrible. What's wrong with you? What's wrong with everybody? It's unbelievable. You know, God will punish us, definitely punish us, what we've done to that area. You just are irresponsible, we're always irresponsible. You could've built that school there, cut out some trees, and leave half dead. I'm just disgusted what you people do to our country, our environment. It's unbelievable. Shame on us, shame on us all. That was all thick forest of trees, and you couldn't leave one damn tree. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Jonathan Heck?
I am here on behalf of my community, Gateway. We have put a lot of time and effort into being chosen the location of MMM High School as well as the name. We appreciate all of your work on this new high school project. Thank you for listening to us as a community. We will see you at the groundbreaking. Gateway High School is our future.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Julian Heck?
I'm just here to say thank you for listening to me. I appreciate everything that you guys have done for our community.
Thank you, Julian.
Kevin Daly?
Good evening, I'm Kevin Daly, I'm the president, the Teachers Association of Lee County, and I rise tonight to talk about an event we had last night. Last night in Collier County, we had an event called Bringing Voices Together. It was a community conversation about public education. Some people in the room were there, we thanked the board members that came, and we understood, you know, the conflicts with the other board members, but essentially, this was a conversation between about 150 community members between Lee and Collier County about public education and kind of a solutions-oriented event that we look forward to moving forward. And that was kind of the first event locally here. The next event we have is on January 13th, and I'd like to invite all of you and about 350 of my closest friends to get on some buses and go to Tallahassee. We want to bring about 50,000 people together in Tallahassee that support public education the day before session begins. So, if you're interested, please reach out to me, you know, Kevin Daly at Talc. Like I said, I'm looking for about 350, 400 people to fill some buses to go to Tallahassee to try to make some real change in the legislature and move us up from 43rd in the nation in per pupil spending. Thanks.
Ann Malaski?
Good evening Superintendent Atkins, Board Chair Gittens, and members of the board. My name is Ann Malaski.
And I'm Miriam Theo, and we're both school psychologists here with the district.
So, on behalf of us, our director Amy Clark and the other fellow school psychologists, we would like to thank you for considering the resolution to proclaim next week, November 11th through 15th, as School Psychology Week. This proclamation will help to provide much-needed attention to this highly specialized field. Psychologists obtain a special-level degree in school psychology that includes over 60 hours of graduate hours of specialized training in research and prevention, assessment, intervention, and treatment in the vast array of developmental, learning, behavior, mental health, and disability-related issues for children. This training also includes two school semester practicum experiences and a full-time, one-year internship prior to certification. With the ongoing developmental and learning needs of students and a renewed emphasis on meeting the mental health needs of our students, school psychologists are integral members of every school's problem-solving team. It is our hope that bringing attention to this unique and vital profession will inspire teachers and parents to access and consult with their school psychologists. Additionally, with a critical shortage of school psychologists, this proclamation will increase awareness for those who may be interested in becoming a school psychologist, and qualified candidates will consider joining our team here in Lee County. Thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you.
Louis Navarro?
Good evening, Dr. Atkins, School Board, Lou Navarro, retired teacher, Lee County. Tonight, I'm wearing Jeff Summers' shirt. He passed away all too soon, a SteroTrak and cross-country and personal friend of mine many years. He had a heart of gold. I think you should put him in the Coaches Hall of Fame if you have not done so, as you did with Mr. Dewey. Last time I did not get finished with my presentation, it was such a big crowd. When I came to speak for the $1 billion budget, I was alone, but to name a high school which should not be built to the tune of $90 million bucks, everyone showed up. I thought prejudice was gone. What if they named it Dr. Martin Luther King High? I thought they should name it Christopher Columbus High, I'm Italian. Remember, America is named after America Vaspucci, Italian explorer. I would like a report on what has been done to eliminate excessive bus stops with school choice, remembering Layla's death. I would like a report from Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Perdue. By the way, Mr. Perdue was an excellent administrator who both my son and I had the pleasure working for. I'm leaving some pictures to show you the Cape Coral bus benches and bikes still tied up. I have been busy, but will address the county half-assent tax roundup by Ms. Debbie Jordan. She gave me the info with Mr. Hammond, County Commission. Seems to be the only one who will talk to me. I have been busy working on my First Amendment's Rights case to sue the city of Cape Coral Police for the bogus arrest as a first-degree felon burglar, which cost me the school board election for District 4. I will, however, get on this most important issue of the half-assent that's going to the county. I did not hear about using that tax that you are getting for teachers and staff and supplies for children instead of buildings. Lastly, Leon County, Tallahassee, has increased pay for substitutes to a minimum of $14 an hour. I guess Governor DeSantis rubbed off on them. Why can you not do that? Thank you very much, and I want to hear from you. You all ignore me. Thank you.
Jaden Torres?
Hi, my name is Jaden Torres, I am a sixth grader at Varsity Lakes Middle School. I ride my bike to school almost every day, and last week, I was almost hit by a car because of safety issues at my school. Every day, many cars drive around the speed bumps in the road into the bike lane, and into the bike lane. It puts not only my life in danger, but the lives of all the kids that ride their bikes or walk to school. If nothing is done, someone will be struck by a car and get seriously hurt, or even worse. Even the decoy police cars have not stopped people from driving in the bike lane, and even school buses do it. There should be barriers installed to provide a safer way to get to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jaden.
Dina Torres? She's the final blue card.
Hi, good evening. You just heard from my son, Jaden, regarding student safety at Varsity Lakes Middle School. As a parent, getting a phone call that something has happened to your child is your worst nightmare. I'm here to tell you that unless something is done about the bike lane at Varsity Lakes Middle School, that is going to be some parents' reality. I've been fortunate enough to be able to drive my son to school since these safety concerns were brought to light, but not all parents have that luxury. We worry about our children all the time, but we shouldn't have to worry about their safety while on school property. Since my initial email to Dr. Atkins last week, I've had the opportunity to speak with several people at the district, as well as Dr. Maderos, the principal at Varsity. From my understanding, this has been a concern for several years. But I am happy to hear that my concerns are being addressed and that there is a site evaluation scheduled for sometime this week. My plea is that this matter will continue to be of utmost priority, and that the district will continue to work diligently to come up with a permanent solution to help ensure student safety. Sheriff Carmine Marsano has also been involved with my plea for increased safety and has placed decoy sheriff vehicles along the interest road to the school to help increase... Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm fighting a cold. To help increase awareness and promote safe driving habits. Unfortunately, it does not seem to have been helping. I believe the only course of action is to install a barrier between the bike lane and the lane of traffic to prevent vehicles from entering the bike lane. I hope to continue to have the support of the district and the school to get this accomplished as soon as possible. The safety of our children is paramount. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Torres. We'll start at the end just really quickly, Ms. Torres and...
Madam Chair...
I'm sorry, was there another?
There was one who had raised her hand.
Yes, sorry.
Good evening, Chair, Board, and Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity. Tonight, I would like to say to you that while I appreciate when the board members share their experiences by visiting schools, I would like for you, if you could, share with us, the community, issues that you resolve. Like for instance, with James Stevens, that's a pass. Now, my concern is Franklin Park. I would like to find out how in the world can I stay abreast of what's going on with Franklin Park School? I was not able to attend the meeting that you had there because I was at another meeting at Florida Gulf Coast when you met at Franklin Park. I would like to know if there's a timetable there and exactly what is going on, if you would tell me, how can I stay abreast of what's going on with the construction of Franklin Park School? And I want to applaud you all for your visitation to see the good stuff that happens, but you know, I'm in the trenches, I like to find out what the problems are and resolve problems. And I was so elated this morning when one of my issues of last year came to fruition with the help of Solid Scare being a part of us addressing the mental health issues that exist in our schools, because last year, I was very astonished with us having so many BI units in schools without the necessary resources there to address those kids, as I said before. Fortunately, at James Stevens, we had those BI units without the proper resources, you gave us some lemmings... You gave us some lemons, but we were able to survive. We made lemonade, and we still came out surviving good at the end of the year. So I want to thank you for that. And if you would, help me find a way to find out what's going on with Franklin Park, because I will be doing the same thing for Franklin Park as was done for James Stevens. Advocating, advocating, advocating. Thank you for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. And is that, that's all?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, thank you to everyone that came and spoke tonight. Ms. Ware, I believe that the best and the easiest way to keep up with schools that are within a certain district would be to contact your board member that is responsible for that area. I believe that's Ms. Jordan. And I'm sure that she can keep you abreast. Also, on the website, the district website, by school events and ongoing things are on there as well. And I'm sure Ms. Jordan will get with you and let you know some of the things that are proposed for the future. Ms. Torres and Jayden, thank you, Jayden, for standing up there. That's not an easy thing to do. We appreciate you. I'm glad to hear that you have some results and that you did get some results, and that's a really good thing. And going forward, and I was speaking with the Superintendent the other day about working with, how we're working with law enforcement, and we also have a group that works with the County Council. And things to do with the roads and streets and all that would be County Council, but I'm sure that our staff and the Superintendent can help them be informed of the things that we need. And our main goal is to keep you safe, Jayden. Okay? Mr. Navarro, you had a myriad of topics, and we have noted all of them, from the Coaches Hall of Fame to the half-cent tax and other items that you had, and we appreciate it. And I have called you back, so don't put me in that group.
Madam Chair, Coach Summers is in our Hall of Fame. His plaque is right outside, so--
Oh, see there? Voila! It's done that quickly. All right, but thank you for your concern. Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Malaski, and where are you seated? Okay, thank you. School psychologists are so, so, so very important. And I noticed on the resolution, your theme is "Find Your Focus," and we know that that's what you all help all of our students to do, to find their place, their voice, and their focus, and we really appreciate you and what you do. Mr. Daly, we, I was along with Ms. Giovannelli at Bring Voices Together. It was an excellent event, and I will leave it when Ms. Giovannelli at the end has her comments, then she can talk about it as well. Excellent speakers, excellent event. We really appreciate it. And meeting with the Collier County, there were some people from the board and other people that were there. So it was very, very good, and she can talk about it a little bit more. My question for you is, are we taking the big red bus or a school bus? Because that's going to determine. Just teasing. Okay, thank you. Jonathan and Julian Heck, thank you so much, gentlemen, for coming back, and we appreciate your comments. Yaprim, and Superintendent, you can help me on this one. I believe when we are getting ready to build, we have to have a clearance from the Army Corps of Engineers regarding, you know, animals and birds and all those things. Can you address that for us?
Yeah, there's a number of things that we have to do to make it through the permitting process, and the Army Corps is probably the most difficult to overcome, but we were able to obviously do that for this project.
Okay. But we did get the clearance from--
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it was, I don't see Scott Reckenbacher here this evening, but I remember him actually addressing the board when we did get our final okays, you know, prior to us doing the groundbreaking.
And Yaprim, I understand your concern. Progress sometimes is not pretty, and sometimes we have to give something to get something. Mr. Grogan, I just wanted to thank you for the interesting comments. Where are you in the room, Mr. Grogan? Okay, thank you. In talking about fraud issues, we have recently hired an audit firm, and I know you said they don't catch everything. However, we are looking forward to them getting to what they're going to do, and there's a selection. You can look back at our previous meetings and the details of how they're going to be going forward and looking at certain particular areas. And it is our goal that as they go along and do unearth certain things that we can change, that we will be saving money by doing that. But we appreciate that, so make sure you watch the progress of that, and let us know if anything else that you think we could, should look at. Ms. McBride?
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Learning to live together, that's what we all need to do, and I thank you so much for your quotes when you come. Ampara, Ms. Ampara? There you are, and the rest of your group. I tell you, I don't know what anyone else is doing at Lee High Senior, because you guys are doing it all. You are just running the school with all the things you're doing, and that's so wonderful. And it was interesting, because most people think National Honor Society, you guys are just sitting there with your nose in a book all the time, but obviously, you are not, and still achieving the things that you need to achieve. Thank you so much for coming and sharing that with us. And I believe that is all of the comments. And next, we have approval of action items in the agenda under consent. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the materials, and we have an opportunity to speak with the Superintendent with any questions we have regarding recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items that you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished or table items? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening.
Ms. Giovannelli?
I have no pulls.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have no pulls.
Ms. Vaughn?
No pulls.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Thank you. We're going to get out of here in time to go see the Little Mermaid. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items? With no exceptions.
Second.
Ms. Giovannelli, Ms. Fisher seconded. Please record your vote. I know. Did you get me?
I did.
Ms. Patrica, did you get yours back?
I did.
Okay, thank you. And motion passes 7-0. There are no unfinished business items. So included in the approval of the consent items on the agenda are resolutions proclaiming November 2019 as Florida Family Engagement and Education Month. We do that every month, every day, trying to get our parents involved. November 11th through the 15th, 2019, as School Psychology Awareness, as we have been informed, and November 18th to the 22nd as American Education Week. Dr. Atkins, please introduce any administrators in attendance with new assignment that were approved under consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've got four folks to introduce this evening. The first is Jennifer McBride, Curriculum and Instruction Innovations Secretary of Teacher to Curriculum Instruction Innovation, Elementary Coordinator, Teaching and Learning. Next is Tammy LaBelle, Cypress Lake High Specialist Support Intervention Teacher to Success Academy Assistant Principal. To introduce, Charles Peace, South Fort Myers High Assistant Principal to Cape Coral Technical College Principal. And last, Mary Sabiston, South Fort Myers High Teacher, Cape Coral Technical College Assistant Principal.
And that's all? Okay, congratulations to all of you, and you brought your cheering squad with you as well. Although, I am looking out there at the principal of South, Mr. Matthews. You're smiling, but I know. Okay, now we move on to board member comments, and let's start on this end. Ms. Morgan?
I'm just going to comment on item E2, which was the MOU with FGCU for Coordination of Mental Health Services. We continue to find partnerships with members of the community who are eager to engage with us and support us in our efforts to deliver services to students that we are unable to do in-house. I think this is a great opportunity for students and families. So thanks to FGCU for expanding this program and for partnering with us.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I wanted to thank the Patriot Elementary School Chorus for coming this evening. A great variety of songs, and one that stuck with me is when you did, when they did, because they're all gone, they're home in bed, right? They sang the song about STEAM. We hear so much about STEM, but I love when the schools say STEAM, because the A is the arts. And I noticed that the National Honor Society group that spoke from Lee High Senior, they also talked about many of the things they do to support the arts. So I just want to say one more time, as a person who has one of those, some people say useless degrees in English, we can't get away from the importance of music and art and drama and all of these things, because they make our children whole individuals. And so I always love it when I hear people emphasizing the importance of the arts. And that's the only comments I have tonight.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Atkins, I won't say that you gutted South, but I will say that you left him slightly handicapped after tonight. If anyone's up for the challenge, though, it's Ed Matthews for sure. I have to say, I didn't want to make these comments because he wasn't yet approved, but I love Charlie Peace. I just think he's a wonderful human being. I got to spend some time with him during Irma, when that school was run as a shelter, and you get to see the true character of a human being in a circumstance like that. And Charlie is like a calming force, and I think Cape can use a calming force right now. He's also a fantastic leader, and the commitment that he showed during that sheltering operation was a commitment to the community. It wasn't just a commitment to the kids at South. It was a commitment to the community and the people who sought shelter there in a very, very difficult time. And I love all the people that I spent time with, but your leadership in particular shown along with Ed Matthews' leadership through that entire circumstance. So Charlie, I couldn't be happier for you and your family. At the time, your baby was a baby, and you still left your baby and your wife, and you spent that time at the shelter. So I just couldn't be happier for you or for the students at Cape or for that community to have you out there as a leader. So congratulations. The only other comment I have is, does anybody remember what a year ago tomorrow was?
Election Day?
It was not just Election Day, where we got three new school board members, including the very first African-American member of our school board, Ms. Gittens. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But we also passed the Happy Sales Tax a year ago tomorrow. Those are my comments.
And I thought I was getting the spotlight. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. I wanted to, well, I think Lee High has left, but I did witness their, the Art Walk. I was down there, and the chalk art that they did was just out of this world. Every one of the schools that participated, it was just really a sight to see. Ms. Ware, she left, but, oh, Ms. Ware. I will meet with you, because I'm definitely keeping in touch with Ms. Freeman over there at Franklin Park and Southwood Village, everything that's taken place over there in that area. So I'll be more than happy to sit with you anytime. Today was our first, I'm working with Success Academy, and today was our first speaker series, and we had an attorney that presented to the kids today. It was such a treat. There were approximately 50 students there, and his name was Jonathan Martin, and he made sure that the, he's like seven foot tall. He's super tall, so they were definitely looking up to him. And he was making sure that the ones who were not engaged, he kept them engaged. He was single and out kids, making sure that they were awake and that they were participating in everything that he was speaking about, and sharing his story of where he, you know, came from and, you know, how he became who he was. But then, at the end, we were asking, we go, what is it that you want to see? Tell us what you want. We'll bring more speakers, because we're going to be doing that on a weekly basis. They told him, well, we want to see a rich attorney next time. He's like, what does that mean? It was just, it was fun. But we're, it was our first one, so we're really looking forward to working on this and, you know, bringing new visions to these students and making sure that they understand that, you know, we're here for them, and there's so many avenues out there for them. So that's what we're going on that. And I was not at the Bring Your Voices Together, because we had a EDAC committee meeting that I attended, and at that meeting, which I, we have a great group of people this year, not that we did not have it before, but they made a motion, a motion was made by Dr. Peter Dinui and seconded by Sean Williams to support the Superintendent's five goals. Superintendent, I'm not sure if you're going to go over those, or shall I?
I can, if you'd like me to, real quick.
Okay. So if you would just share what your five goals were, because they're, definitely want to support you in every endeavor.
Okay. I'll do that in my comments if--
Okay. So he'll share that, so we don't double. And that's it. And I thank you, and congratulations to everyone this evening, and good luck with your new endeavors.
Thank you. Ms. Giovannelli?
Okay. I did attend the education summit, Bringing Your Voices Together. I actually loved it. I think it was great to have the opportunity to collaborate and with the community there. I would love to see something like that here in Fort Myers, because I think it's much needed to have the conversation. It's tough conversations, but we need to have them. And if we don't start there, where do we start? So I want to thank you guys for having that conversation with us. That was great, and I was honored to be a part of that process. I also, no one talked about this, we talked about it in our briefing, but the Build Our Future, that was really awesome, and I'd like to see keeping the community and the businesses involved. When I spoke to several friends that were there, that had their businesses there, they brought up the issue that in the construction business, it's hard to have children under 18 to participate, like in our internship with SOS, because that was something that I spoke to them about. And so I think Dr. Atkins is looking into seeing how we can work around and with that and kind of engage more of that, because they, the kids really were very tentative to that. I want to do a shout-out for Cypress Lake Panthers. They have districts this Friday night, and I hope they win. So anyways, and that's all I have, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. So if anyone has any questions about what's happening in our schools, take a look at our Diplomat Elementary Chorus who performed this evening, and also at Delaney Balcom, our student representative, who's a sixth grader. So I can't imagine what--
So I can't imagine what she'll be doing when she gets to high school, but we'll try to keep up with her. I want to congratulate the new administrators, and we know that you'll do an outstanding job, and we'll be keeping our eye on you. So, we had, we attended, most of us attended this 40-year celebration for Israel Suarez, who has really given so much to this community and helped so many people to, not only to be fed and have a place to live, but to also live a more productive life. I want to thank Chair Gittens for her presentation at our Legislative Delegation Meeting last week. That was excellent, and they didn't even time you out. So that was good. Speaking of the arts, the Wicked Walk at Sidney and Byrne Davis Art Center was certainly a tribute to all of the work that's being done. And I want to thank Lee Byers and Dr. Santini and all of the art teachers and music teachers in this community for really giving kids an outlet and helping them to enhance all of their learning. Last week, we also had a red ribbon celebration here. We do have a great partnership with the Drug Free Coalition, and we were able to recognize many students for their athletic, artistic, and academic successes. So good things are happening in the schools. We had a tremendous amount of interest with the Gateway High School naming. And so, it's showing that we are building more and better relationships with our community, because we really are getting a lot of response. And along those lines, with the mental health issues, our partnerships in the community are increasing every day, and the support is much needed. And really, ultimately, we can do a lot of preventive things by reaching people young and then helping our community to save a lot in incarcerations and other issues by getting our kids on the right track now. So I want to thank everyone who has been participating and collaborating to comply with recent state requirements and to offer our kids the help that they need. I just want to mention two school visits. I went to South Fort Myers High School, and they're doing a program there, which is Building Assets, Reducing Risks, BAR. And it's a comprehensive approach to meeting students' academic, social, and emotional needs. And their data from that is so outstanding that I had to mention it one more time, because they had a decrease of 42% in failure rate in the ninth grade and 29% in the 10th grade just this year. So it is really a great program. And thank you, Principal Matthews, for leading and for supporting the education of the whole child. Yesterday, I visited Coronado Charter School, and they have started a program for seventh and eighth graders who are behind on their credits. I had an opportunity to talk to about seven or eight kids who were there. None of the stories were the same, but they all had a common thread. They're older than they need to be in middle school, and they want to get to high school. So they are having unanimous success in catching up on their credits, working in that small environment with individual attention. So I want to thank our charter partners for the work that they're doing to help us with those kids who need a little bit special attention. And I want to thank all of our staff for all their hard work, and everybody's safe home. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Delaney Balcom. Your on. Your comments about the meeting and how you felt?
I thought that the National Art Honor Society was like really cool, because I was in National Honor Society in elementary school. We didn't do National Art Honor Society, but I'm big about art, so I think that would have been awesome to have. And the bicycle lane thing, that's, I think, in FLL Robotics, we're doing a thing about shaping our cities and local cities. And we were thinking about a lot of things, like handicap playgrounds and things like that, but I don't think bicycle, like barriers for bicycle lanes ever came up. But that is really cool, and I think that would be really helpful. And the fact that the community is part of the naming of that high school, I think is like really awesome and shows just how involved people can be. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Delaney. I haven't been in the classroom in a while, and I haven't heard the, you know, you know they're finished when they go, well, yeah, okay. Thank you, Delaney. That was awesome. I think it's my turn. I'm going to quickly go through a couple of things that I participated in, and then I have something to read. The Quality of Life Center had their opening of their new building. If you get an opportunity, go by and see that. It was a very nice event. And they are serving a lot of our students in the school district as well in their after school, and their dancers are great. They're wonderful. So they're doing some good things. This morning, I went to the Avid showcase at Lehigh Acre's Middle, and they had participants, teachers, and administrators from various counties coming to see what we do. And I spoke to one of the Avid teachers from, I forget which, I think it was Highlands County. And I said, well, you know, what brings you here? Because they said they were a demonstration school as well. And I said, oh. And they said, well, Lehigh Middle came to our school and told us all these great things, so we had to come and see what they were really doing. So it was a great program. We had tours and found out exactly how well Avid is going and the good things that it's producing. You will hear more in the future. The superintendent and I met last week with the CEO of the YMCA. And you can't tell how super excited I am for that partnership. We are looking at partnering with them to do before and after-school programs that would actually hire some of our staff, teachers. And they talked about the process. When they do that in schools, they're able to, with their tutoring, actually talk with the teachers and make sure that those students are getting the tutoring that fits what they exactly need. So we're really excited about that partnership and moving forward with that. And Ms. Fisher, I don't know if you remember, I don't even remember how many years ago it was, and I was trying to get, I was working on getting my master's in ed leadership. And one part of it, you have to interview people at the district. And you had to interview a board member. And I remember interviewing Ms. Fisher in that very same office. And as we were sitting there, one of the things she asked me, she said, have you ever thought about being on the board? And I'm like, no. And I thought about that the other day, but here we are. Thanks for planting that seed. And tonight is the final meeting that I will chair at this point. And our next meeting on the 19th?
Yes.
The 19th. It will open up with the superintendent doing the reorganization, and we will elect the new chair and vice-chair for the board for the coming year. I'm not going anywhere. I'm here for three more years, so. But we will reorganize and see who will be the chair and the vice-chair for the next coming year. So with that in mind, thank you for the intro, Ms. Patrica. And I'm going to read this so that I can get through it. "At the end of my first year as a member and chair of the School Board of Lee County, there have been victories, disappointments, happiness, sadness, all for the love of the children of Lee County. Making history brings with it extreme responsibility to honor those that have gone before me and to pave the way for those to come. Paving sometimes means moving obstacles, evening out a path so others can walk smoothly in the future. Making history requires assimilation and acceptance. I had to assimilate and others had to accept. I'm not sure who had the hardest job, but I will continue paving. We've heard many times about storming, norming, and forming. We've had our fair share of each. However, it's my goal to continue working during the next three years to strive for more norming and forming. We can't stop until seeking first to understand then to be understood is a norm. Listening to all before making decisions is a norm. Valuing all opinions is a norm. Forming, taking something that looks different from what you are familiar with and adding your thoughts and forming something that is totally new, innovative, and fresh. Forming fair and equitable policies and procedures that benefit all of our students and employees. We have made strides this year. And some of our victories are, we have an agenda review process where we work out all the details and questions and issues that we have in a workshop format that allows us to be more collaborative and succinct in our action meetings. We have a strategic plan board involvement situation that we set up, that everyone on the board has a responsibility to take a part of the strategic plan. That is what makes us run. That's the glue that keeps us all together, is our strategic plan, and we all have a part in making sure that that happens. We've been working towards FSBA, or Florida School Board Association, Master Board Training. We've had several trainings with that. We are working on the YMCA partnership to help all children with our before and after school programs, summer jobs for staff, et cetera. We have worked on successfully having our SOS summer program, and this next summer, we're adding and expanding it to the East Zone. We are working with an agreement to build an innovation school that will benefit students in their academic success. We have succeeded in getting covers over portable walkways. Sounds small, but it's a big deal for the teachers and the students in those schools. Partnerships and collaboration with law enforcement and local agencies to improve the safety and security of our students. We've continued to increase community involvement and awareness through the participation and boards for many of us, and volunteering hours and participating in community events. We are bridging that gap with our community. Diversity and inclusion and unconscious bias, we had training and awareness of thoughts and needs of students and staff, and we learned the Platinum Rule, which is to treat people the way they want to be treated. Relationship building with the legislative and local and state. We received our Grow Your Own bill passed and is already in process. The legislation for teachers passing their test that they don't have to pay the whole fee was another one of our successes. And we've hired an attorney firm. We've hired an audit firm. Our attorney firm has been working on streamlining our business contracts and procedures. Our audit firm is poised at this point to start our employee hotline in the first quarter of 2020. We have overseen fair and equitable hiring processes and protocols. We have instituted televising all of our meetings and advisory boards for transparency and had more involvement of our advisory boards in our decisions. I've often told the story of my erased assignment with my students, of which the outcome was the statement, no matter how hard you may try, you can never be erased. The good that this board and governance team has done for children of Lee County can never be erased, because it will live on always through the students that do achieve his or her highest personal potential. I want to give a quote from Michelle Obama. "I have learned that as long as I hold fast to my beliefs and values and follow my own moral compass, then the only expectation I need to live up to is my own." Thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board and to have served as the chair from 2018-19, and I look forward to the future. Thank you. Superintendent?
Just one thing from the attorney. We, an attorney by the name of Stephen Maher reached out separately to both my office as well as Brian Williams. He has been retained by Palm Beach County School Board on a potential class action on behalf of school districts against the e-cigarette maker Juul, related to recovery of costs associated with vaping. He asked us if the board would be interested in hearing a presentation from him. So I, you know, we advised him that we would find out if you all are. He assures me it will be brief. So if the board is interested, you know, that's something we can facilitate at a workshop or something, a brief presentation.
And add to our briefing?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll make a note of that.
May I ask a question? If it has to do with a lawsuit, why wouldn't it be a shade session?
Well, you are not part of the lawsuit currently. So what I understand is the presentation is, is he's going to be presenting what he expects the lawsuit to be. And actually, I have to be honest, I'm not sure if the lawsuit has been filed yet. I think he was just retained, now that I think about it. So if it hasn't been filed yet, there would be no availability for a shade session. But what he would like to do is make a presentation about the issues, and I assume to try to get Lee County to come on board. I mean, I don't want to speak for him. Usually plaintiff's class action attorneys, they do it on a contingency basis, but, so I assume that that's what his attempt is as part of the presentation. So for those various reasons, it couldn't be done as a shade session.
And we do have another shade session that will be coming up, and we can discuss our involvement in that. Superintendent?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank you for your service. I appreciate it. And we'll get another opportunity to give our thanks as well later. I'd like to just turn everybody's attention. We have the American flag that art is displayed on the screen, because we have Veterans Day coming up, as you know. So next Monday is Veterans Day, and I think we have, I'd like to recognize, I know there's a number of veterans in the audience, and if you don't mind, if you could stand and be recognized, so we could thank you for your service.
Dr. Atkins, you did not stand.
But, you know, in honor of our veterans, you know, Dr. Skrika, who was a former board member, came up with, along with the help of the school and Lee County community, Pride and Patriotism, which is a wonderful opportunity to recognize accomplishments, not of our students and their art, but also showcase the service of our veterans. And Pride and Patriotism is coming up this week, November 7th at 7:00 PM at Barbara B. Mann. Some of you will be in attendance to that event, so I would encourage you, encourage all of us, if you have an opportunity, it's always a great event. And again, it recognizes not only the service of our veterans, but also the wonderful artwork and media work of our students. Also want to make note that we have another community forum coming up, November 6th. That's tomorrow. This is at Benita Springs Middle School, and that's at 6:30, and that's in partnership with NAACP. And we have a couple of our representatives here, Dr. Chapman and Mr. Buchanan are here in the audience this evening, but that's another one of those events, and look forward to doing that. And also was mentioned, we're trying to come up with what we call the Big Five Goals that Debbie Jordan had an opportunity to present to EDAC, and I'll do a very short version of what those are, because I get excited about them, and I'm sure at EDAC I want to know them. But the first one is, it's real important in terms of our community to connect better with college and career tech ed, so our students really have a pathway to the career opportunities that we have here in Lee County. A lot of great opportunities that a student can get through our college. Here we got Charlie Peace, who was just named principal and director of Cape Coral Technical College. And so one of the big goals that we have is expansion of our technical colleges, the renovation expansion of Fort Myers Technical College, the hopeful expansion of Cape Coral Technical College. And Charlie has a lot of great ideas related to how that can be done, along with Brian Mangan, that we heard about before, had also had some ideas to bring forward. And then ultimately, the... And then ultimately, the building of a new technical college here in, in Lee County. That really is something that, that I know this board strongly supports. And it's time to, to really make those plans and move forward, executing all of those. We want to see something actually happen at Fort Myers Technical College this year. And, and we'd hope to also make that happen at Cape Coral Technical College this year. And then the plans in concrete this year as well. So we can put a date out there to where we can shoot to building that particular campus. Also strengthening our career academies at our high schools. Dr. Spiro and his team have been working on this and the, the development of, of community and business roundtables or advisory groups for each one of our high schools. So we can connect each one of our career academies with business owners, corporations, and companies that have professionals in those fields. So our kids can have direct contact and, with those people, not only financial support, but also just the skill, expertise, and, and the networking that can happen with the interaction between people that are actually in the field and our students. So they know the future that's out there in terms of, of what business here in Lee County can, can offer. The next big goal is of course pre-K. And so we would like to start expanding that by at least 200 per year, starting at James Stevens International Academy. We would like to get that, that actually up and running no later than the beginning of next year and then have a plan for this board to expand that out through Lee County. Because you've heard me talk about kindergarten readiness. In Lee County, there are six, only six districts across the state of Florida that have a lower kindergarten readiness. And those are six rural districts. We as a community need to come together. And I think that if the Lee County School Board and then, and our district start to expand the number of pre-K opportunities and remove some of those barriers to getting into a quality pre-co, program, pre-K program for our parents, we will all be better off. And that will also go a long way in helping us to reduce the achievement gap if all our kids can start out with a laying, level playing field. Our community engagement, we mentioned the Nations Association and that's one of several community agencies that we think we can partner with. YMCA was also mentioned by the chair and there are others. So we can provide more before school, after school, and summer school programs for our kids. So learning can continue beyond just the six and a half hours that we have in, during the school day, but also throughout the summer. And so that's something that we need help, I think, in support of our community agencies to do so. Proximity student assignment is the next one. This is where we can, we can get closer to improving some efficiencies in our transportation system is also having our students start to attend more schools closer to where they reside. And I, we need to actually make some progress for next year, going into next year, as we look forward to three or four years out, really going to a proximity-based student assignment system. But there are things we can do right now to get some, some big wins for this district. And then the final piece is of course continuing to, to work on workforce, exempt salary schedule, working on difficult to staff schools, and doing things, I think, to build our succession plan. So those are all kind of the big five. They're aligned with our Envision 2030, which is of course our strategic plan. But we talked about this at EDAC and they just, they just heard what we had to say and, and decided they wanted to jump on board and support us. So it's really neat to see an advisory committee just hear what we had to say and say, you know what, we want to be a part of supporting that. So I commend that group. It is a really, really good group of, of people that I think represent a very diverse section of Lee County, which is excellent. It's what we need. But to jump on board with our goals and support us, I think that meant a lot. That was very humbling and I appreciate that support. So that is all for my comments. Thank you.
And I do have to add, when you're talking about expanding our career techs, Ms. Giovinelli and I and the Talc and Spalk representatives were at a pretty nice career tech building last night. And their culinary, oh, the food was unreal. It was good. But we can do just as well, or better. All right. Thank you. Our next scheduled meeting of the board is on Friday, November the 8th. Will be a board workshop at 12:30. Okay. At this point, having no other business come before the body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
On my turn.
And that is Ms. Giovinelli and seconded by Ms. Jordan. And please record your vote. And while they're doing that, thank you all so much for attending. Thank you, thank you for those that stayed for our meeting as well.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you and good night, everyone.